Mr. Lahey.
Okay. Just as quickly, this is a finance subcommittee meeting regarding preparation for the budget. And specifically, tonight's agenda is on the technology and the costs associated with upgrading our technology K through 12. In addition, looking at the X2 portal program that's currently at the Lowell High School in terms of the progress where it's at at this point in time and expected progress for the fall school year and implementation through K through 8. At this point, I think the first agenda item is the status update on X2 portal. Mr. Lang or Madam Superintendent, if you could bring us up to date with where we are at at this point in time?
Thank you. If we could just preface also this whole conversation with the fact that our budget this year, we just received a notification from the city manager that they will be level funding our budget except for the additional million. If you guys, if you remember last year, the city gave the school department, I believe it was, I don't have the exact number in front of me, fifteen plus million, but later it was an additional million that was voted to give us, one-time monies. So that one-time million dollars was just that one time. So the numbers that we are, continue to hear coming out of, you know, the state host is that we will have the governor's numbers. That hasn't been challenged yet at this point. Plus, we have the $4.8 million from the Ed Jobs money. As you recall, our structural operating deficit, because we're losing $6 million stimulus money out of our budget this year, plus our operating costs were just over three, we were facing just over $9 million. But because, in fact, the Chapter 70 funding formula this year considers Lowell Public Schools a foundation district, the formula was quite generous to us and we're, we will be receiving a six to seven million increase to our, to our number that we did last year, plus the five million from Ed Jobs money. Again, those, the Ed Job money is a firm number. The state number is not. And at this point, the city number looks pretty solid and the, and the city side, my understanding, is still facing a $1.5 million deficit. So that's the context, big picture of this conversation this evening. And, you know, I think it's important, we did meet with the principals today and spoke with them about the technology issue across the system. It's a concern for all involved and we know that it's going to take considerable resources to address the issue. And I think in many ways, because of stimulus monies that are considered one-times monies, buying one-time purchases like computers and programs are one thing. What is more difficult will be the human resources that will hit our budget, our operating budget, year after year. So I'll turn over to Mr. Lang, just to fill out some of the details.
Thank you. With regard to the first item, you remember the last time we got together, Mark Lou and the headmaster were here from the high school and they talked about the X2 parent portal and the rollout. So I asked Mr. Lou to just give us an update and you have just a quick one-pager. It just talks to, to date, the rollout's been going very well. It is being well-received by both staff and students at the high school, parents as well. As of yesterday, I believe, approximately 225 families had signed up for the access and have started using the service. About 300 parents in total and 250 students at the high school have regularly been accessing the portal with their classroom teachers to check grades, assignments, homework, responsibilities, things at that part, at that point. And that seems to be going very well. They did outreach to the eighth grade students coming into the high school for the following year and are sending home the necessary registration forms and informational brochures on the X2 parent portal so that when they come in as freshmen, they'll have that contact immediately with, with families and teachers at the freshman academy. So on, on that front, the rollout continues to, to go well. Good, good response from both kids and students.
Okay, just a quick question. Do they have the infrastructure right now to accommodate any student or any parent that wants this activity right now?
Yes, the infrastructure is unlimited. The X2, the student database that we use, is, it's actually hosted offsite. It's a web-based system. So anyone who has access to the internet can actually access it. There are no limits on how many accounts you can have or how many users can be on the system at any given time, so there's no issues around that. The only issues that we're having at the high school, when we talk about expanding the program and bringing it to scale, really is just the accessibility and access of our staff at the high school during any particular period to a good functioning computer, which comes into kind of part two of the agenda. But that's really the holdup. There's no other, say, human holdup on the X2 side as far as the implementation goes. We've, at the high school, really give them credit. They've streamlined the process for when the student brings in the form, signing up, getting the parent, the username, password. They've been able to keep up with, with how to get into the system, how to access the information, so that's been going well.
So we have, all we need is make sure we have the updated equipment, that we can have 100%, you know, userability if, if that's what the parent wants to do, if we have those numbers?
Correct.
Which will get into part two of the agenda.
Yeah. On the backend, this, the software is there. And again, it's just an annual license that we actually have as a district for the whole district. The portal access comes as part of our package, so there's no additional class to us. It's just really scalability and how quickly to implement.
Okay, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Lang, to Mr. Lang, sorry. In looking at the quick update from Mr. Lou, it doesn't mention how many teachers are actually on board. Do you happen to know how many teachers are? Because I, I realize that without the teachers, your access to specific homework assignments, rubrics for specific projects, that's going to be limited.
Right.
Do you have that number or no?
Off the top of my head, I don't. I do know that there were at least 30 that were participating the last time we met that were starting as part of this pilot. And that is directly where those students are coming from. Because we really did need to work out the kinks as well before we kind of went live with the whole school. So there's at least 30 teachers. And he did indicate that additional teachers are seeing their friends using the system and they're jumping on board. I can, after the meeting, just follow up on the next day or two or Friday's packet with just an update on how many staff are actually using it.
Can you remind me, how many teachers do we have at the high school? Is it 200?
No. I, I want to say in the 325, 350 range.
So is the plan then, the goal, to have everybody on board by the fall?
We need to talk about that. And we need to talk about just how quickly you can scale out the program. A lot of it is going to come down to equipment and putting equipment in the classrooms for the teachers to have access to. The system is certainly there and the system is not providing any holdups to be able to do that. I think, you know, equipment and really staff training and just getting staff up to speed on using the program. I do think over time, this will just become a part of regular business. Teachers currently are going in each period to record attendance. They're not having to do anything else. They're already into the system, they're using it, and I think they're going to see it as a great resource.
Just one more follow-up on the equipment piece. If teachers are, have equipment in classrooms to take attendance, which we're doing attendance all on the computer now, why wouldn't whatever equipment is there to provide that be enough for the other pieces of?
Right. The, some of the equipment that we have in classrooms, particularly the high school, but even as we look into like the middle schools and the elementary schools to roll out, it is a web-based system, so it doesn't require an incredible amount of speed or processing time on the individual computer. But if you're going to get in, you know, when you go in to post attendance, it's a pretty routine screen. You're going in by default, every child is present, so you're just recording the kids that aren't present and you're posting. When you really fully implement the system, you're, you're going deeper into the program. You're posting almost, you can do like blog-type stuff, so you're actually posting, say, homework assignments. You're having feedback back and forth between parents and whatnot. You need a little bit more robust computer or you're just, you're sitting at a computer that's hanging for a long time. And it's just not as, as quick and user-friendly to use.
One last final follow-up on that. Do we have at the high school, don't we have a faculty center? Is that staffed with up-to-date computers, you know, faster computers? A place where faculty can go and?
I would say yes. The faculty center, there are certainly, certain areas of the buildings that have the most up-to-date technology. We have not, over the last really three to five years, invested a significant amount of money in capital technology. We've done very good keeping up with the infrastructure of the buildings, kind of the backbones, the, the wiring, the switches, the closets, because we receive a considerable amount of money through E-Rate to keep those programs going. It's a federal program that we provide a match to, so the backbone of our system is very strong. The, the real issue we're facing is just the physical desktops, laptops, things like that, that are actually on people's desks. The, you know, the life expectancy of them being, you know, three to five years max. A lot of our computers are well over 10 years in, in certain schools and buildings. It just has been an area that we haven't had the, the funding to, to invest in. And we need to not only have an investment for next year, but it really needs to be an annual plan. It's, and we'll, we'll get into this kind of in the second phase. We, we don't have the money on hand to be able to make a massive purchase year after year after year. So you really do, as a district, need to have a, a plan, and that's what we need to talk about. You know, what will our replacement plan be for computers? And if, let's say it's a five-year turnaround plan for computer, you know, we need to be investing, you know, 20% capital every year to really make sure that that, those computers are turned over in a, in a proper fashion. And it's been, it's been very difficult, obviously, as you know, over the last number of years with budget cuts and decisions we've had to make. A lot of those capital purchases have taken a backseat to keeping staff in the classrooms right in front of the kids. So that is going to be an area we need to really look at.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. This may be more specific to the actual program, but especially where we're going to have eighth grade parents able to kind of log in early, will that be a place where parents will be able to confirm schedules before students begin? At Lowell High School, obviously, we've had some, you know, concerns over the years about schedules being finalized and kind of kids having them in hand before they arrive September 1st. Will that be a function that parents will be able to just log in in July or August and say, okay, my, the schedule's all set, you don't have to, we won't have to worry about that come September?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question. I know the original plan was to have all the paperwork done so that over the summer, the data processing folks could be setting up the accounts. So my guess would be no, I will confirm for you. It, it would, it'd be great if we could actually get them the usernames and passwords ahead of time. I don't know, again, enough about the different screenshots that the parents have access to, how much actually scheduling would be in there right now. I know that it's more grades, homework assignments, attendance, things of that sort.
You'd have to put the class in before you can put in grades, so?
You do, but it actually, all summer long, we're doing the scheduling and you have to run several scheduled scenarios. A lot of that's done, it's not live data that's actually happening because you've got to load all of your, your student requests are in the system, but you've got to run different scenarios based on teacher availability and schedule and things of that sort. So a lot of that is run in the background. It's not actually posted to an active schedule until you actually get a schedule run that's acceptable. So you might say, we want to make sure that, you know, 95%, which is actually a high threshold, of the kids are all fully scheduled before we actually post a schedule to the system. And then the rest of the 5% have to be hand-scheduled. So there may be kids that have individual errors that come up, they have conflicting programs, things of that sort. I do know that takes well into the summer to actually post. So I just don't know what would be actually live for a parent to see while they're running the scheduled scenarios in the background. But I can follow up for you.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay. I guess the, what we really need, and I think we probably should took the third part of the agenda first, is we need to take a look at what is the written plan for the high school rolling this out so it's fully implemented. And I think what you're saying, which, I don't think what you're saying, what you are saying is it's, it's equipment-driven at this point. And the second part of it is, what is the administration's plan for beginning a pilot program K through 8? Do we have a plan in place to start this in the fall or is that something you're still currently working on? Madam Superintendent?
So the proposal in front of you this evening is really the first step of that, looking at the equipment that we would need to do that. So that is this document here. So if we want to just go over the particulars of the infrastructure piece, so that, if in fact we do have one-time monies at the end of this budget cycle, that we could purchase this much-needed technology.
Let me walk you through, if I can, the, the second, it's a stapled attachment. The first sheet, it's just an Excel spreadsheet that I've tried to list by grade level so we can actually just take a look at what we would need investment-wise at the elementary, middle, and the various other levels in the district, including the high school. The number of strands that we currently have in the school, you know, would be, you know, most of our elementary schools have a four-strand configuration, so you have four first-grade classrooms in a building. Number of grade levels being K to four at the elementary level, so there's five grade levels. To come up with the common teachers in that building, classroom teachers, so there'd be 20 in our general configuration. The Riley has five strands, so there's 24, 25, sorry. And the Washington and the Moody are two-strand schools, so they have a few less. But you have the total classroom teachers. And then I just went through the actual budget documents I've been preparing and tried to capture all the additional teaching staff in the buildings. So that would be your special ed teachers who would be providing assistance, math resource teachers, reading resource teachers, things of that point, who would actually possibly have a classroom and need access to the computer to be able to have dialogue going back and forth with their kids. To come up with a total number of specialists within a building. So if we were actually going to make an investment and we said, we want to ensure that every teacher at the elementary school level has a, a new functioning computer in their classroom, just one, so that they can actually do the correspondence back and forth, fully implement X2 and other access to, to technology. At the elementary level, we'd need to purchase 400 computer workstations, 400 computers. At the K8s, it's 73, middle 296, right down the line. So you'd actually be looking at 120, I'm sorry, 1,028 units. So you'd be looking at 100, 1,028 computers we would actually need to purchase if we wanted to guarantee every classroom had one new computer that was functioning for primarily teacher access to be able to use both X2 and other parts of their work. And I just did a projection based on what we're currently getting computers for. So you'd be looking at about a million one to actually do that. And that's, again, just one computer per classroom.
Just a quick question, just to interrupt you, but to get, do we have analysis of what we have right now and what's working and what we don't need to update in the following budget year? And you made reference to what we need to develop a plan in terms of turnaround. Where are we in the process of putting that type of plan in place?
Currently, we don't have a plan district-wide that would actually call for a certain amount of rollover each year. Largely, we've had to kind of really back off any significant, say, tech even planning and purchasing, just because we haven't had the staff or the money to, to invest in it. I think the, it would be a good project for both the administration and the committee to really work on over the course of the next number of months, putting a, a technology plan in place for both next year and, and the 2012, '13 school year to start implementing. And we, as a group, need to have the decision and talk about, you know, what is our expectation for technology in classrooms? What is the expectation for a teacher use of technology both in, in classrooms? Again, not only X2, but how are they going to integrate that with their, with their teaching? That's going to really have to, I think, be a district discussion. And it's going to need to involve folks at the elementary, middle, high school level because they're really going to be the ones that are, that are implementing whatever we decide on.
Well, just to get back into the first part of the question, do we know what we have right now and what, what is update, what in need of update and what is not in need of update presently?
We have?
Do we have like a, like a chart or a?
No, I don't. Anecdotally, I can tell you that we have very few in the, in the schools, computers in classrooms that are less than three years old. The last major purchase we did with technology related to that Microsoft settlement a few years back, we purchased some technology that largely went into computer labs. So we haven't purchased significant technology outside of what we're required to for special ed and to meet certain sped guidelines. There's not a lot of updated technology in individual classrooms. That's certainly an area we need to, to focus on. A lot of the technology you're going to see in the individual classrooms is well over five years and is relatively obsolete in, with regard to, to where it stands educationally.
Madam Superintendent?
And I think just to add to that, this is just one computer per classroom and it would be for teacher use to do the administration and that needs to be done that we're talking about. So this isn't, isn't any additional necessarily student computers, which is a whole other, you know, which is a whole other area of the technology plan that needs to be looked at because the computers that students are using arguably are even older.
The other thing I just wanted to point to, I mean, this was just trying to kind of tie a global number to you as far as, you know, what one computer per class is. Obviously, the number of classrooms isn't going to change under our current configuration. So if we decided as a group, we wanted to have, you know, the computer, the, I'm sorry, the teacher having a newer valid computer. And as a group, we said, really, our goal is going to be to have two computer desktops for student use in a building. You know, we'd be looking at the million one for the teacher side and, you know, two two for the, for the kids. If it's three or four, it's, it's really, again, it's just all scalability and that number is going to go about a million one per computer based on what you want to see in, in classrooms.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, through you too, Mr. Lang. When we look at what we have in terms of technology expertise in our schools, we have, I think, laid off a significant number of our computer teachers, correct? I mean, are, are, do we have any computer teachers left? And what is the level of expertise with our staff?
Just speak myself. It's going to vary school to school as far as the level of expertise. You obviously have some teachers that absolutely just gravitate towards using new technologies, they're up to speed on them, they integrate them day one when you give them. Others are going to take some training and some time and it's going to be a full kind of rollout and implementation process.
But do we have any more?
No, as far as people go, I wanted to get to that. At the elementary level, we don't. We actually eliminated all the computer, I think, instructional technology specialists last year, so there aren't any left at the elementary level. At the middle school level, there are still four in the nine middle schools that we have, largely because they're part of the allied art block. So when schools in the past have made decisions about allied arts, some have made decisions about, you know, I'm going to keep my computer teacher because it's a part of my allied art block, but I might have a phys ed or a music or not teacher who's retiring, so I'm going to take the cut there to avoid actually laying off a body because it's just, it's a piece of a schedule. And for them, it's interchangeable whether the student is in a computer lab for a period or they're in art or music. So at the middle school level, there are still four computer teachers. Not in all schools, just four of the nine schools have one computer teacher as part of their allied art block.
I thought we made the decision that every school would still have art and music. So it wasn't that they took away art or music, but they had a retiree and they were able to maybe just stay with one art teacher as opposed to two and keep their instructional technology specialist?
The middle schools have, have different, different schedules and different options of programs. Everyone has a minimum of phys ed, art, and music. It's just some schools will have two art teachers or three art teachers, two music teachers, whatnot. Everyone's still maintained at least one of everything. It's just some schools did make the decision to keep the computer teacher over a phys ed or music or not, but they all still maintain that, that program. And at the high school level, I believe they actually eliminated both of their specialized computer teachers. Now, obviously, they, they have computer labs and individual classroom teachers at the high school level bring their students to a lab for a project, much more than would happen at the elementary, the middle school level. But I don't know off the top of my head of any actual just computer teachers that wouldn't be tied to a specific course that they would be teaching.
Okay, so one other follow-up with this. We had computer labs at the elementary schools too. So do we still have those labs even though we don't have the instructional technology specialists?
Yeah, I didn't get around to answering that part of the question.
Oh, sorry.
You jumped in on me. At the elementary level, when we did that last purchase a few years back, most of the schools did put their technology in the lab. Again, we still had computer teachers teaching classes in the lab. So if they got 25 or 30 computers, most put them in the lab. Most of the schools still have maintained the lab because individual classroom teachers are booking time and bringing a class to the lab. A couple of class buildings have said, I'd rather take those 15 to 20 computers and integrate them into the classes. So different rooms actually picked up, say, one computer. That has happened. But we don't have significant technology, you know, and that's where we talk about most of the stuff in the classrooms is well over five years old.
Okay. What I think we desperately need to know and like ASAP, we had a motion in 2010 regarding what we have, what we need, and actually, per school, what are the years of these PCs in each particular classroom? So when we do need to go out and make purchases, instead of looking at getting everybody one brand-new one, we can take a look at what desperately needs to be replaced. I think that's something that we need to get done as soon as possible because we're coming up on the budget year, well, next, this month and beginning of June. I know it's a, a challenging task, but it's something that we need to know. Part B of your presentation outlines particular items such as Elmos and smart boards. And we need to know specifically, I mean, I haven't gone through that report yet, but we need to know what we have. I mean, I can guess from, from looking at some of the schools that I've been into, like the Bailey has one Elmo under lock and key and the Pawtucketville Memorial, for example, has two smart boards that they pulled out of a closet when the new principal got there. I mean, this is stuff that we, we need to know this information when we go into making budget choices. I think we all agree that we've had desperate times in terms of any money to fund technology, but right now, we need to know, if we had the money, what do we need to replace now in terms of PCs? Like for, for classroom teachers, or what can we keep for an additional timeframe? Because it's, it's, it's still usable and still functional. And then going over to the flip side, what types of funds do we have and how do we want to implement using, for example, if we want to implement that technology, smart boards? Do we do one per strand, per, per school? Do we do a cup, make sure every school has a certain number? Right now, I don't know what other schools, I don't know, and maybe, I don't know if you have this information from the administration, who has what right now in what particular school? And I know it's a challenging task and we've been overwhelmed by a different, you know, short of staff, as Ms. Doherty just pointed out, but we really need this information in the next few weeks as we get into the budget time.
On this, on the second part, if you look at the second page of the report, this deals with what we currently have as far as, say, the teacher presentation stations, some of the, what you might call it, the Blackboardino technology in some of the schools.
First column.
The first column actually lists on page two kind of what the school currently has around these teacher units. So we, we did some purchasing around, it's a, a teaching cart, it's got a, an Elmo projector that shoots up on the wall, it's got a, a very low-grade laptop because you're not doing a lot of technical stuff on it. And a lot of them have that document reader device, the name escapes me, but to be able to post up work on the board. So that's what we currently have in the system at the various schools.
So just to, not to interrupt you, but so you do have, so I apologize, so that I didn't take a look at the second sheet. For the second sheet, as far as the regular technology, we do know what we have in what particular classroom then?
Yeah. We're not protected classroom by school. And it really just ties into, the one school that, that we haven't, again, put a lot of money at is the high school. I put a zero there just for me to be able to do my projections as far as what type of Elmos or Blackwoods they have. Those are just three buildings we weren't really able to fully go through. So I'm assuming they don't have a lot because I know we actually haven't invested a lot, so I'm putting zero in that column. But if you look at my second column after the darker line, if we were as, again, as a district to take a look at, we wanted to, at the elementary level, make sure that at least one teacher in every, I'm sorry, one teacher out of every four, so one per strand had a, whatever we want to call it, the teacher presentation station. Technology changes all the time. It might be more advantageous to go with the, the whiteboard type thing. We'd need 22 units to bring us to, to scope. The next column just says if we actually want to get to the point where we have one for every two. So one out of every two teachers has the technology, there's a number of 66 at the elementary level. And then the third one is if we actually wanted to have every teacher, every, and not every teacher, but every classroom in a building, because you do have teachers that switch classrooms, but every classroom have a dedicated workstation for the teacher. At that level, you need 165. So that goes down to the bottom and actually, I just calculated out at, at the various levels so you could take a look at it. But you'd be looking at, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars if you wanted to actually have every classroom in the building have some type of a teacher presentation station occurring.
And that's really good information. I think that's, this is excellent. I think we can do that for this PC part of it too, so we can understand what we need and need, what we need and where we need it. Ms. Doherty?
I'm going to go back to the whole expertise piece again because my biggest fear is that we invest money in all this technology and we don't have the staff support to make sure our teachers can use it effectively. So I'd like to see a plan and maybe part of it, when you're surveying, you know, the status of the computers in the different schools, the computer labs and the age and all that, to also be talking with our administrators in the schools about how comfortable their, their staff is with technology in terms of looking at how are we going to fit that piece in, the professional development piece? Because I think that's important. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Just two things. So Mr. Larry, the information you were looking for with regards to the second page, that's, that's there. The first page though, with regards to the personal laptop computers in each of the schools. As Mr. Lang has said, we can, and we have, up to, you know, five years ago, purchased numerous computers. It's just that they're very old, and for them to run the programs that we need, so we can, you know, we can calculate how many old computers we have, but we do know that we don't have newer computers that would be needed to run the programs that we need. So this number in front of you is a, a real number that we would, at a minimum, have to have for our teachers. And to come to your point, Ms. Doherty, I think it is a very important point that you're making, and this was the point that was discussed with the principals today, just with regards to the resources, the human resources we're gonna need to support this type of infrastructure when things break down, or even the educational supports. And as, you know, Ms. Franco and Mr. Lang and I were discussing, we can't still, it's very difficult for the administration to make recommendations on hiring full-time staff when we're building on a deficit. And, you know, I think it, there is some value in us having the conversation with the committee, what type of staffing model you would like us to entertain. You know, some of the things that we, we have been discussing would be perhaps to have a technology person. We, as you know, we recently hired techie people, but in the past, we have had, you know, technology teachers, and that would be a nice compliment to have a technology teacher per se, per zone. Then we would have go-to people to work with the principals on these technology issues. And that's, you know, just one model that we've been discussing. Again, we are reluctant to bring forward personnel costs. We, at our next meeting, we will be bringing forward additional costs in special education because of our stimulus money drying up, and that will hit our operating budget. We have additional ELL teachers that we need throughout the system, because we've had hundreds of students come from all over the world that will hit our operating budget. So, you know, the, this whole conversation, I'm sure will go on for the next few weeks. And again, not to bring forward the personnel piece of this technology piece is gonna really cripple our, our, you know, our ability to implement.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. And I do think that's really a critical component that, that both Ms. Doherty and the Superintendent bring up. Just in terms of how we can maybe structure this, and this, I know we're early on in the budget process, and there are a lot of things we're gonna be discussing. But the concept of, you know, as I know, you've mentioned, Mr. Leary, you know, pulling smart boards out of a closet because no one knew how to use them. I mean, that's the real sin. You know, if we're making these investments in technology, we need to ensure that they're being used, and that they're being used, honestly, all day, every day. I mean, this is the kind of work that we need to have going on in our classrooms. And I don't know if it might make sense, if we looked at a technology, and I'm not talking about your, the techie people who fix things as, as they go wrong, but if we had a true technology educator who is really, what, and what I'm envisioning is that they'd be part of the teacher academy, so that all of our, all of our teachers, as they're coming into the district, or at various points really throughout their career, would have to complete a curriculum, not of how to, how to use an Elmo, or how to use, you know, a PowerPoint, but how to truly use the tools, the, the technology as a tool in the classroom specifically. You could make that a course, you know, a small subset, you know, again, all new teachers may have to go through it, and the, the kind of existing cadre of teachers would have to go through it before they, and this may be a bit curt, but before they earn the right of having a smart board in their classroom, before they get the brand-new computer that comes out. That they have to do this, complete this process, and at the end, that's what they get. They get brand-new technology in their classroom that they're equipped to, to use effectively, that they've been trained on how to use effectively. If we can't kind of card blanch by all new computers for everybody, which I, I don't think is gonna be, you know, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that, why not really target resource and target it in a two-pronged attack that not only applies the technology, but invests in the people so that they're using it effectively? I mean, we've all sat through presentations, and, you know, a PowerPoint can kill ya. And I can only imagine how, you know, within a classroom, technology that's not being used effectively is, is worse than no technology at all. But I think that could be a real positive, almost incentive plan, to get our teachers on board, and by really showing them how they can use it effectively, and how it'll make their lives easier, whether it's, you know, plugging into X2 and getting their information up there all day, every day, or whether it's, you know, their actual work in the classroom. If we train them and give them the real skills to use this, I think that might be kind of putting the, the horse before the cart, which can be a bit of a change of pace for us.
Horse before the cart. I think the point, I guess, I think it is important that we look at taking a staffing model for technology. And I know the budget spend, it is what it is, we cut, you know, $20 million in four years, but this is what is expected. And what Brian Martin had said at our last meeting, community partnerships, we're, we're competing. So this has gotta become just as important as even an instructional teacher in the classroom. We have to be able to staff and train people and maintain it, and it has to be budgeted, and we need to really sit down and think of, what is our plan going to be going forward before we start putting, you know, millions of dollars into technology? And I think Ms. Martin had a good point, that maybe we should take a look at staffing models at our training, at our teacher academy, as, as one part of our technology department. I'd like to see if we can get like a chief information officer, or maybe work with the mayor, through the city's chief information officer, to develop a plan to work with us because of staffing is so short, to put that plan in place. Because if you have technology, and one, people don't know how to use it, or it's not the right technology for, for our educational needs, then it's basically wasted money. I know it's a lot of effort, and it's a lot of frustration, because we've been lapping off technology because we're trying to save the classroom teacher. But I think what, what we need to do now is take, take technology and some of the staffing and treat it as if it was important as a special ed teacher, or a first-grade teacher, because it really is. If we're gonna keep kids going to the little public schools and competing with, you know, the little Catholics of the world, or, you know, some of the other schools, or even the charter schools, we need to ensure that we're putting that investment in, and, and talking to our business partners, and talking to our, our city side that, and let them know we need the funding in order to compete and be a good school system. And I know we want to do it, it's just a question of, we gotta make that a priority. Madam Superintendent?
I'd just like, just to flash a few things that Ms. Martin just touched on. And I think it's really interesting, Ms. Martin, with regards to if, when you said if, well, once people finish professional development or certain courses, that they would have, we, we would reward them with the technology. That's a fairly interesting model. I'd just like to expand on, and just talk about that just for a little bit, because not to stereotype our, our older teachers, or teachers who went to school 20 years ago, but a lot of the people in that category, our master teachers aren't necessarily as techie savvy as our newer teachers who would come into the academy. So those teachers have a lot of technology skills that my generation and beyond had to go back to learn, because we didn't have that technology in school when we, we went there. So I'm thinking, though, what you just said, if the school committee were prepared to say, this is what tech, this, this is the technology we're gonna support. A teacher needs to ha, show us that, so that we don't have things locked up in closets, that you've taken this course, or that you are able to use it. Then you would build instantly, I think, critical mass throughout the system, because our staffs are quite mixed. You know, we have older staff, we have younger staff. And I was in a third-grade classroom at the Call School the other day, looking at the smart board, and the teacher, his dad at the third grade in math just popped. I wonder what's going on in that classroom? So I went to visit, and he was showing me how he was teaching fractions with the smart board. I mean, it was so cool. And so everybody on that third-grade team is like, when can we get our smart board? So if the committee were prepared to take a stand of, we will buy you the technology, you have to show us that you're equipped to use it, that you're educated to use it, that would, I think, spread like wildfire, and that you would have people saying, I want this. Mr. Lang and I were over at the Moody two weeks ago, and they had the new projector, and I forget the name of the projector. It wasn't working, and Mr. Lang was getting shocked, electrocuted, trying to fix that. And, but the teacher loved it, and the teacher down the hall came and said, you know, I really would love this, too. She's, has, she, she listed all the educational reasons that she wanted the technology. And I think that if you put it out there, that we will, even in the first year of your plan, this is how you set it up, we will provide you with smart boards, or we will provide you with this, you just have to tell us you're gonna use it. You would build critical mass, I think, at grade level, and then the one teacher or two teachers who were reluctant, the principal could have conversations, it would, you know, move it along, and I'm sure that if they went in and saw the same fraction lesson I did on a smart board, they would want it.
And just, just to follow with that, I think you made a good point. I think, question is, how do we develop that objective right now? Because there's a couple of things here. One, we need a short-term objective for the budget year right now in terms of what we need, and how to use that in an effective manner. The second part of it is long-term, what is our overall plan for the next five years, or, you know, three years to five years, et cetera? I think, as Doherty was just pointing out, the good, excellent part of the technology training is, if we could put the money aside in this budget year for training over the summer, so we can get folks up to date on their own time, and we can provide that training to them, then we can go out and get the technology after the summer's over, in, in different schools for folks who would really be up and running. And even, you could almost get a teach-the-teacher type of format, if we could develop certain teachers in each building, if we can train them this summer, you could get them out in the facility, in the schools, right in the fall. And then over time, we can start implementing the technology as best that money can afford, and develop a broader plan, and then having part of that plan, how do we get those resources to buy the equipment that we need? Because I think you're right, Madam Superintendent, once they see how fractions and other types of mathematical, you know, equations are developed and taught, as well as grammar, that's something that everybody's gonna want to do, especially when they realize it's not that difficult to do. So if we can get a short-term objective outlined for the budget, if we can do that for the budget season and, and get that approved, I think that might be a good starting point. And then look at other areas that we haven't really developed, that we're not looking at tonight.
Madam Superintendent, then Committeewoman Martin?
Three things. One, what's, right now, what is in, this proposal in front of you, the recommendation that we really want the committee to consider is at least one laptop for every teacher so that we can proceed with the operational management issues. And on the second page, you know, the smart board and other technology, and, and we've given you the, the breakdown, the ratio. So that's the baseline recommendation of, if we could start there. But what I would add to that, just if I've understood Ms. Martin's initial suggestion about them asking for it, I would love to have a survey, and this is an email that goes out to our staff, how many teachers would welcome a smart board in their classroom September 1, and bring that number back to you? Because that's a real, then you have people saying, we're gonna use this technol, they're driving the boat. And I'm telling you, I, I think we would get a, a big response. The other approach could be the approach that we have in front of you. This is how many smart boards we need in the district, which, that's a reasonable approach and mandate it. I'm not sure, I, I think that if you did it over two years, you would have everybody using them and being motivated to use them. So I just put that out there as a suggestion.
Okay. Madam Super, Committeewoman Martin?
Thank you. And I do think that kind of this, this approach to it makes a great deal of sense. And I think you can even, again, because I do think we have a great many, you know, kind of younger teachers who've grown, who've gone through school and are very familiar with the technology and know how to use it. I mean, you have an opportunity to let those people kind of almost test out. They don't need to go through any kind of a, you know, a training program, whatever. I mean, in all honesty, they should be the ones who are really informing the training and helping us develop it. And I think one of the key things, as we talk about, kind of, you, you hit that critical mass, you hit that tipping point. When your teacher groups are working together, and they're doing their, you know, using their common planning time, and they're, they're reflecting on experiences, and they're seeing each other's work, a group, you know, a group of teachers comes in to watch this amazing fraction lesson, you're right. I mean, a, a teacher who may not have ever seen how they could apply this technology in their classroom could really be inspired, and that's, you know, and, and if you're putting the, the tool in their hand when they're ready to take it, when they're ready to use it, then I think you can really see something pretty extraordinary happen in your classrooms. And again, you know, bottom line, it allows us to maybe stretch out our purchasing. I mean, the reality is, we're gonna make so much of a purchase maybe for September, and I, I think it would be great if we could make this all happen over the summer, though I think I see fear and panic from the administration about the idea of being able to pull that together so quickly. But I think that the reality is, you're gonna see this happen in stages, and, and that allows us to kind of do our spending in stages.
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on two things. Part of my hope for tonight was really just to lay out some, some costs for you. I don't expect for us to go, say, come September 1, every single person's gonna have one in their classroom. But at least we have a dollar, a number assigned to that, so that we have that when we're talking. I do think it's gonna be critical when we lay out this technology, however smaller or large, that it needs to have the support, or it is gonna sit there and not be fully utilized. So part of the, I know the discussion and the rationale about hiring the media technology support liaison folks was to have some people in, in, be able to help teachers in classrooms. We now have two for the district, you'd approve three, we're still interviewing, trying to find a good third body to come into that mix. But we would have to also look at, as part of the budget cycle, you know, what is gonna be an acceptable kind of ratio of support folks for this? So maybe, you know, now, it might need to be one per every, three buildings, one per every four buildings. Maybe as a group, we say, ideally in the long run, we want to have one per building, but this is what we're gonna do to kind of take steps towards it. There needs to be that personnel piece, as hard as it is, to support this, because to make an investment of that magnitude and not have the support and the follow-through, it's just gonna frustrate the individuals and also the, the system. So we've got to keep that in mind. And I think the, the other thing, as a group, we need to talk about and also do, do some planning for, we've taken, of all departments, we've taken, again, significant cuts in technology. It was, we're now in our fifth year without a technology director for the district. So there really needs to be some, someone in the district driving this. A lot of good people have come together to kind of keep it, keep it together, and it's been a lot of patchwork. But if we are gonna, again, get to the point where we're making long-term investments and significant sums of money, there needs to be someone kind of driving that, that chip. So we need to have that discussion also, as part of the budget as we move forward. But my hope was really to just tie some numbers to this. What I've done, because I didn't want to get off this, I mean, this really talked about the teacher projection cuts and whatnot. When you actually look at the individual PCs in a room, we have that data, and what I would just argue is, anything probably beyond five years just isn't relevant, as far as its usefulness. We have an inventory system that just tracks the new computers when they come in the district, and I can give you a sheet, school by school, of how many computers are five years older or less. So we, it's not that we don't have that data, but really, anything over five years, even though it's there, I just think it's not worth counting, because again, it cannot run the educational software and package that we need to, but that can all factor into the mix. Then the question really becomes, though, when we had, like, some of these computer labs that were updated, do we, as a group, want to pull that technology out of those labs and into classrooms to have there be that one functioning computer, or do we want to maintain those labs? We need to be cognizant of that in the coming years, too, because the DOE is moving towards doing more assessments and, well, you can talk to this, like benchmarks, assessments, even the MCAS when that changes over online. So we'll need some access where a class can even go to a lab and take a test, or instead of actually purchasing hard labs to go in, a lot of districts are moving towards mobile labs. So you actually have rolling cuts that, you know, you can roll a cot of 30 computers into a second-grade classroom, and they take the test that day, it goes to the next classroom, the next. But I think it's gonna have to be that combination of, say, cuts, so you have computer labs, where you can actually equip 30 people at a time to take a test, and also maintaining that the individual instructor has at least one fresh piece of equipment. And I can get you that list of anything that's less than five years old, that's not hard to do, but I'll tell you, it's not significant, because we just haven't had the, the money to make that. This million dollars is a real number, and I just wanted to provide you that, so at least had some starting point for the discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lang. Deputy Superintendent Franco?
Just a couple of points. The, all of the new curriculum materials, it's imperative that you have the technology goes with, that goes with them. So as we're, our teachers just showed the social studies for eighth grade, that was a gap that we had, and they came together. Along with ordering a set of textbooks, it, it really, the online connection, kids can get the textbook from home, we know that's not equitable for all our families, that's part of it, but with the purchase, we're purchasing a presentation station for every social studies teacher, because that has to become part of the integral training, and that, that's how materials need to be purchased, and as we go forward with adoption, it's just as important to get that presentation station with this new technology to allow teachers to teach the right way. Looking at the standards, we spoke about this today, because we were unpacking common course standards today at leadership with, with our principals, the technology pieces are imperative. And so as we look forward, really, what a school district needs to look, you're gonna have to have banks of computers, because the park, the new MCAS, in two, three years will be online. We've missed opportunities to take the MIPA online, because we haven't had, we tried, it did not go extremely well because of network pieces. So all of those are very important in our three-to-five-year plan, to make sure there needs to be technology in classroom, and there has to be, there have to be banks of computers. So that's part of it. The other piece is, I, I think that when we look on site, our structure of lead teachers, teachers who know about technology in every building has been very successful, and we've worked with English language learners, we have lead teachers. So experts who step up on-site and have, receive a stipend and position, comes out to a couple of hours a week, and they step forward, and they're on-site. So when we're trying to do this personnel piece, that may be something we may want to consider, but Jay's absolutely right. Every year, you know, we divide up these big jobs, like the, the technology coordinator, so my office has always put in the information, Jay's office has always done the updating, because we have to submit a technology plan every year. So we do have that information, but when you look at it, they say A, B, and C, and we are heavy on C, which means they really don't count. So all of the information here is important, but it's gonna take a combination of how So all of the information here is important, but it's going to take a combination of how we build banks of computers for kids to get, we have all kinds of great software, books online, kids can access from home, from here. It's really incredible, but it comes down to that hardware. So, you know, just some of those issues. But the on-site piece, I think, is very important because these schools are running computers with a wing and a prayer and you have to give them a lot of credit. It's been admirable that people step up and keep it going.
No, and I agree, Madam Deputy Superintendent. I think what we need to do is really focus on technology like it says, if it was a regular classroom. We need to put that infrastructure in place to assist the folks that are, that are out there. And I think in this budget, we need to begin at that point. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you through you two, Deputy Superintendent. You mentioned something about the lead teachers. Do we have lead teachers in every school? And are they specific to, like, lead teachers for math, lead teachers for ELA, and are they all technically experts?
We have, right now, we have ESL lead teachers because we needed people to be able to, to identify the LEP kids. And so we have that. We do have the coaches that do other work. There are some lead teachers at the high school. But the only one position that exists across the district right now is the ELL lead teacher that we've done for a number of years. But in, in times when we really need to have that expertise on-site, that might be a possibility, that we could have a lead technology person. And that's something in the contract stipend in position. And it depends on expertise, you know, but something that's worked for us.
Madam Superintendent?
We will be bringing that forward as one of the suggestions. Again, the lead teacher stipend is $3,600. It is in the contract. That's at least a minimum that each school would need to be supported. That wouldn't be adequate, but it's a lot more than we have right now. And, you know, Jay, Jean, and I all think that that's a step in the right direction. At least you would have it in every building, a contact person. And the, the level of technology and the support that that person would give us is not really sophisticated to the extent that, we're not asking them to do programming. This is basic online technology that many of our teachers who come out of college now can do with their eyes closed. So, but we do need a contact person so that, you know, the techie person can call and, at the school and know who's the technology contact so that the curriculum office has a technology contact to, you know, access the various programs that Jean just said, make sure they're up and running, making sure that teachers have support. And, you know, a lot of our teachers help each other out now, but if we did have one person, you know, at least that would be the minimum. And we just wanted to bring that up as one thing that you will be seeing.
Good. No, that's excellent. That's a good start. And I think that's what we're talking about, building small objectives first and putting them in place, then we need to ultimately lead up to a full plan. But that's, that's perfect if we're going to roll that out during the budget season. I guess, what I guess, in order to take an action step here, I think, Madam Superintendent, you pointed a good idea about getting a survey in place. And if there's, I don't know, Madam, Ms. Doherty, if you'd like to put a motion in place to, and ask the full committee to, you know, ask for that survey so we can begin looking at what types of technology we'd be purchasing for this budget season. So I'll take that as a form of a motion.
So moved. I guess you were talking about a survey of staff interest. Remember you mentioned?
Yeah. I mean, I just love that approach and I think it'd be very powerful. So if we, if you're asking us to send out an email to our principals to survey our teachers, that the committee wants to look at investing in smart boards and with the expectation that you ask for one, you're using it, I think that that would be very interesting to get that response.
Okay. Mr. Lahey, second?
Yes, but I did have one quick question.
Sure.
Just smart boards at this time, or are we also talking about the computer and technology in the classroom?
Well, I guess, a good question we would, and I don't know, Madam Superintendent, you could, and anybody else, please jump in on it. I think smart boards and related technology. I mean, there's other technology besides smart boards, I believe, that's used at the Maury School, I'm not familiar with it, but stuff that's related to that, that we, before we start making purchases, if there's an interest, because we don't have a lot of money, we can start with the interest first and then build in our full plan, something that's implemented throughout the entire K through 12 classroom. I don't know if you agree with that, Madam Superintendent, or if there's another method you'd rather see?
Well, if I just understood you correctly, so were you asking us to survey, is there other technology that people are interested other than the smart board? Was that the question?
Or similar technology. Mr. Lahey, you can elaborate more than I.
Yeah, just, actually, just yesterday at one of the games at one of the middle schools, I had a conversation with one of the teachers and they were just talking to me about technology and I said, I, we're moving ahead with that. But I can't remember exactly what she was talking about, but she's talking about something about in the classroom, maybe the computers that the teachers have for grading and making sure that they're online and they can use the X2 and they can take advantage of, of the whole system. So I think that, that needs to be looked at too.
That's exactly what Mr. Lang and the superintendent brought up earlier about PCs and the age of the PCs at the first part of it. That's definitely something we'll be looking at, but that's also, you know, the biggest cost, I think, Madam Superintendent.
I appreciate that, Mr. Lahey. And I don't know about you, Mr. Lang, but I really, I think if we sent out an email asking our teachers if they needed an updated computer, they might just, like, you know, press delete. Because that's, we know that. So the first page here of the handout, that's how much it would cost for us to give them an updated computer. So we do know that information. With regards to the second page, Mr. Lahey, before you arrived, Ms. Martin suggested just an approach to get technology at a critical mass would be, once people were qualified and basically asked us for it, which we think there would be a critical mass, would be a powerful way to go forward and might spread it out over two years. But we do have the infrastructures in place in our system right now where we have established solid grade-level teams, where, you know, we have three teachers who are working with a smart board on fractions, the other two are going to be like, what about me? People don't work in silos anymore with their, behind the door, you know? So in the past, you might have one teacher who was very illiterate with regards to the use of technology in the classroom, that would impact nobody else on the team. That's not how we work. So people are going to come together in the common planning time, they're going to plan lessons. Well, it's going to be very difficult to plan lessons with old equipment in all the classrooms. So I think if you just trust in the process, it will really address itself and it will be seen as a gift from the committee. With the committee, we're being, what I understand you guys are asking us to do is to survey our staff, to ask them, who would like a smart board? That's a great approach and I just think that it will pay great dividends.
Ms. Doherty?
So second, I'm sure of the motion.
Ms. Doherty?
I just wanted to speak back to what Deputy Superintendent Franco mentioned. We're talking about three different things. One, we're talking about an updated personal computer for every teacher so that they can be part of this new operational system. We're using X2 to full capacity, really being able to communicate with our community, our parents, our students, that. Second, we're talking about computer presentation carts for teachers to be used as a method for instructing students. The third piece that Ms. Franco mentioned, which I think is very important that we don't forget, is student computer use. And do we have this, and now I know, I remember we put computers in the freshman academy, we created a lab there, the Star Close the computers should be fairly new. But we really need to, to have computers throughout the district that students can access the software. And as Ms. Franco mentioned specifically, the social studies curriculum we just bought, I mean, these curriculum needs are as important as the other two, I would think. So I'm hoping that, you know, the survey's a good piece, but what, when you come back with a plan for us, that you are looking, you know, and I realize, we're not going to be able to do everything, but that there's a plan that goes out that speaks to all three of those areas. That would just be my hope. Thank you.
Mr. Lang?
I agree with you on the three phases of the three kind of issues. The third one's going to be the most challenging just because I think the pure scope of the number that we're going to be dealing with. There are some pockets of newer technologies, but they're pockets. If you look at the Star Close the school, that's, I think we're in our sixth year now. That school's been open. So, you know, that technology is already six years old. We, oh, sorry, we just haven't had, again, the money to really make the investments. It will be part of a plan. I think the number will be staggering, it'll be something we have to tackle over a number of years. But, no, I definitely think it's worthwhile.
No, but I think too, and I think the good part of what we're doing here is we're outlining that we need a lot and it costs a significant sum of money. And not all of it's going to be coming from our school budget and it certainly isn't going to happen in one year, but at least now we can identify or begin to identify what we need. So if we can put part of it in our budget this year and take that as a, exactly prioritize, but also say, technology is a top priority, then if, as we're reaching out for these community partnerships and developing relationships and re-establishing relationships, we can say we need X amount of dollars for technology. It's not, and we do need the infrastructure of human resource to assist with it, we can put that in our budget. But ongoing, you know, changes with technology, we may need to go to the business community or outside sources, grants, whatever, to establish those needs. And we need to put a plan in place. And I think, first, that we establish it's a top priority despite the budget cuts. I know it's been a major challenge and I'm in there with you on it, but now we have to at least identify, here's what we need, here's what it costs, we can't do it all at once, let's start putting some pieces in place, and then reaching out to folks who may be able to assist us in achieving some of these goals. Good. So we have a motion on the floor for a survey, which I think is an initial beginning. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passed. To carry to the full school committee. Madam Superintendent? I don't know if you had?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else in the motion. I don't know, Mayor, if you'd have anything to say or any other members? I think it's a motion to adjourn by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lahey. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, guys, for taking the time tonight. Appreciate it.